Welcome and thank you for joining us, Dr. Rye City Council Candidates. Amos Roefeld, co-president of the Rye Ride Org in Rochester Chapter of the League of Women Voters. Before we begin, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the true republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and democracy for all.
Thank you so much. So, Rye is nonpartisan. It neither supports nor opposes candidates. Our members are women and men from a wide variety of neighborhoods and political perspectives. And what we share in common is our dedication to encouraging the informed and active participation of people in our government at all levels. We are always looking for new members and volunteers, so please don't be shy. Please allow me to introduce our moderator for this evening, Marsha Brewster of the River Towns League. She has served as president of the United Nations Association Westchester Chapter for many years. Having worked at the United Nations for over thirty years, she devoted her career to programs related to water and sanitation, sustainable development, and gender equality. We thank her for being here this evening, and at this time I shall turn over the forum to Ms. Brewster.
Thank you very much, Liz, and good evening to our candidates and to audience participants. It's my pleasure to be here. In accordance with league policy, I am not voter in this district. I am pleased to introduce five out of the six candidates for the three open seats on the Rye City Council. The council member candidates running for a four-year term are Marian Anderson, Robin Jovanovic, Amy Kessivan, Maria Shuck, and James Ward. The sixth candidate, James Fee, could not attend tonight due to circumstances beyond his control. A link to the forum will be available on the local league website, www.lwrbpc.org. Our timekeepers this evening are Jackie Quaylar and Renata Mandemater. Welcome to you all. Before we get started, I would like to go over a few ground rules. The order of opening statements has been determined by lots that were drawn before the meeting. The order of closing statements will be in the reverse order as the opening statements. The order in which candidates will respond to questions will be rotated by the moderator to assure fairness. Throughout the forum, no comments of a personal or abusive nature will be permitted. The moderator will rule this out of order. The allotted timeframe for opening and closing statements will be two minutes. The timekeeper will indicate when thirty seconds remain in the allotted time with a yellow sign and when the time is up with a red stop sign. The opening statements will be followed by fifty minutes of five or more questions prepared by the league from questions submitted prior to candidates' night by email on electronic form. These questions have not been shared with the candidates prior to this evening's forum. No questions from the -- oh, there will be questions from the audience alone. The moderator will address each question to each candidate, and each candidate will have one and a half minutes to respond. The order in which candidates respond will be rotated by the moderator to ensure fairness. Question-response tasks will be strictly enforced. The timekeeper will indicate when thirty seconds remain and when to stop. A candidate will be allowed to finish a sentence once started. If an audience member wishes to ask a question, please fill out an index card being handed out by our facilitators and return it to them. We have allotted thirty minutes of audience Q and A, and again, candidates will have one and a half minutes to answer. During closing statements, each candidate will have two minutes to speak. The candidates will not interrupt one another or the moderator during the forum. The moderator will have the authority to pause the proceedings to enforce the ground rules and the format, except for time limits, the only restriction on candidate's statements, our respect, and civility. We will begin with opening statements. I will call them in the order in which they were chosen out of the hat. Candidates, you will each have two minutes to make an opening statement, and the first statement will be from Robin.
Thank you. Do I push this? Let's start the timer? Yes, just push?
I think so. It looks like it's on, huh? No, Renata.
Hi.
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Robin Jovanovic, and I thank my stars of the fifth-time Bill Henderson asking to run up his slate, I relented. It was meeting his running mates Maria Shuck and James Fee that sealed the deal. The fact that all three of them went to law school and are avid golfers didn't dissuade me in the least. But we all share a desire to make a difference in a community we love. My love for Rye began thirty-three years ago, and my husband's job in educational publishing brought us back to New York. We researched every town within a thirty-mile radius of Manhattan and narrowed our search quickly to Rye. Rye has long been a desirable community to live in, but homes with potential and within most mortals' price range have never been plentiful. We fell for a Victorian within walking distance of train in town, with ninety-seven families that toured and not one had made an offering. Always up for a challenge, we spent the next seven years restoring it. More importantly, within a few weeks of our arrival, we were given a free membership to the Rye Arts Center and before I knew it, I was on the board. Rye is a place where volunteers, where residents volunteer and give back willingly. I served on the Rye Library Board for a dozen years, running the annual book sale for ten. As a deacon at Rye Presbyterian for three years, I took on the assignment of bringing flowers from our church to the Osborne, and I wrote and gave out handwritten notes. It was to writing and a paying job that I returned to in nineteen ninety-eight after years of freelance work while raising our two sons when I became a contributor to the Rye Record. Shortly before nine eleven, I became editor and co-publisher of the paper. At the end of that tragic and tumultuous year, my husband was diagnosed with an idiopathic and terminal pulmonary disease. I credit Rye, our friends, the bonds we made, the strangers who left meals on our front porch, for helping extend and enrich my husband's life for another twenty years. If given the opportunity to serve, I will dedicate myself to helping ensure that our small, special city is well-cared for, is more than sixteen thousand residents, listened to its natural beauty and story character long enough. One sentence.
Thank you, Robin. Marian, you are next.
Okay, I'm Marian Anderson. I have lived in Rye all my life, born here. My parents came to Rye City in the late nineteen forties and bought property in Glen Oaks for five hundred dollars at auction. I've just gone up since then, right? My dad was a carpenter, and he helped build Osborne School. You know, so that big rock in the back of the school was something that he decided he needed to stay there back in the nineteen fifties for Osborne to build. I've always been a person who's willing to step in, always been a person who is interested in history. I really strive to help other people. I'm willing to work with others. I've worked very hard in Rye. I was a director to Kids Face Rye, and it was a flattering little organization at that time, and I decided that I would be better helped to it to become board chair. So, I switched from director to board chair. It is now a very successful organization. It is, I think, thirty years old, or close to thirty years old. I am on their advisory board, and I've been on the advisory board for twenty years. It is a great after-school program for children ages kindergarten through fifth grade. I've got thirty seconds left. I've also worked with the school district. I've done curriculum planning. I was on the UPK Committee. I am an early childhood consultant that has worked at Rye Presbyterian Church and at Christ Church. I have worked throughout the county on various boards, Carter Center Board as a vice chair. A lot of experience in business, not-for-profit, and running my own business.
Thank you. Amy, you're next.
Good evening. Hi, Amy Kessivan. I'd like to start by thanking the League of Women Voters for hosting tonight's forum, Josh Nathan, James Ward, and Marian Anderson for their wisdom and support, and my opponents for tonight's civil debate. Thirteen years ago, we chose Rye for the same reason many of you did: waterfront access, quiet neighborhoods, a charming downtown, and exceptional schools. But today, we stand at a crossroads because our community is changing. We have new development proposals that don't fit the character of our small community, neighbors experiencing flooding on an increasing basis, and I've noticed neighbors clashing when we should be working together. I'm running to stand up for the very best of our community, to preserve what's best and plan for what's next. Throughout my life, I've worked to bring people together. In civil service in the Air Force, I worked with our allies to cooperatively develop and deploy new technologies for our troops. As a nonprofit leader, I foster collaboration in our community, and as a mom, I'm an on-call food and logistics provider. I've been meeting Rye residents and hearing the same question: How are we going to keep Rye rye? We need to put neighborhoods first, adding thoughtful developments, adopt friendly design principles, discourage tear downs, and support recreational facilities that meet the needs of our local families. We need to finally adopt a master plan, and I mean it, let's get it done. Let's plan how we're going to promote self-service, parking solutions, safe streets, all by maintaining our quiet charm. Rye must become one-hundred percent flood resilient. No family should be displaced or forced to bear crushing expense because of a late rainstorm. On November fourth, I hope I can count on you to vote Row A for Rye, to preserve the best and plan for what's next.
Thank you very much, Amy. Maria, you're next.
Thank you for coming, and a special thank you to the League of Women Voters for arranging this event. I'm Maria Shuck, and I'm running for city council together with Robin Jovanovic. Bill Henderson is here today, and James Fee was not here today. We are running on a truly bipartisan ticket. I have the utmost respect for Amy, Marian, and James, and I really do agree we are civil and we are friends, although some of us have just met. My own ticket, we are all in for Rye team. My husband and I moved to Rye thirty-two years ago. We didn't have any family here. We have basically a very small family. But Rye adopted us, and then we adopted Rye. The whole community is our family, and we are just exhilarated to be here today. Now, you hear some accent, I am Swedish. I was born and raised in Sweden, and some of my words are not perfectly pronounced in English. We are blessed to have two wonderful sons that we raised in the house that we bought in nineteen ninety-three that we still live in. Until the end of last year, I worked for a very large international law firm, and my specialty was doing large corporate global reorganizations. In this work, I worked with many accountants, lawyers, business people from all over the world, getting things done on time. I've also managed a New York office, had P and L responsibility for twenty-five years. I've been the first woman chair of several nonprofit and professional organizations. I'm still on audit committees. I'm still the chair. I have several events in New York, so I know how to run a board. But I'm not wrong.
Thank you very much. James?
Good evening. I'm Rye City Councilman James Ward. First, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting tonight's forum. I'd also like to thank my running mates, Josh, Amy, and Marian, for your support and dedication to our campaign. And finally, I'd like to thank my opponents for tonight's opportunity to engage on issues facing our city. Last year, I was elected to serve a one-year term on city council, but before I even considered running for office, I was making an impact in Rye. I chaired the Rye Sustainability Committee for four years, and two years ago, I co-founded the Rye Sustainability Foundation. Our work has collectively made Rye a safer, more sustainable, and financially sound place. Our project to ease flooding risk and improve the quality of life in our community. Now, serving on Rye City Council, I am continuing the charge. We've worked hard to stop overdevelopment, setting a thirty-five-foot cap on downtown building heights, and directing the creation of design standards for new construction. We've also stood up the utility companies by taking Con Ed's into court over their rate hikes and joining Westchester Power to give community members real choice. We've worked to protect the environment by advancing natural flood barriers for the blind brook and stopping the development of sixty-seven Rand Ave. We've accomplished a lot, but there's a long way to go. I'm running for reelection because I want to keep Rye the kind of place we all want to raise our family in: safe, sustainable, and financially sound. We're facing big practical challenges, and making city government more efficient without burdening taxpayers is important. But with comprehensive, long-term planning, and open community dialogue, I know we can rise to that challenge. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, James. Now, it's time to start with the questions. Each candidate will be given an opportunity to answer each question, and we will rotate who answers first. You will each have one and a half minutes to respond. The first question: Name one issue the city council voted to approve this year and explain why you agree or disagree with their decision. Marian, you're first.
I'm first? Okay. I think I would like to agree and support the decision that was to -- one is very self-serving, so I'm going to do the self-serving first. The city council voted unanimously to support a project that I brought in front of them. It was before I even decided to run for council. So, I'm thrilled to tears. It came to fruition, and it was renaming the Rye City Train Station Plaza to the name of Paul and Oriya Red, who were civil rights leaders in Rye State. I loved that decision. It was a great historical moment for the city of Rye. It's something that will tie into the curriculum for the school district, that it will be something that lives on forever in the community. So, I just think it was a big, important work, and I think it was awesome because the entire council and mayor voted unanimously to support it.
Amy?
I, of course, support that as well. Marian did an excellent job on that, and I really want to commend her on that. Another decision the council voted on this year was the decision to stay in Westchester Power and offer that as our default choice. I think that was the right decision for really one word that was key in that, and that was the word "choice." Without Westchester Power, we have a monopoly, we have rising interest rates, and we have no options to be stuck with anybody other than Con Ed. So, I did support the decision to stay in Westchester Power. I also supported the lease lower, the lease lower ban that I wish they would have carried through with. I think that that is a quality of life issue in Rye. But really, the biggest thing, I think, is the Westchester Power choice that we provided our residents.
Thank you, Amy. Maria?
I think I agree with Marian. I think it was a significant day in our history of Rye when we renamed Station Plaza, whatever that street was called before it's still called. And I admire our Red Family, and I think the way Marian was able to get that through, and you know, city council and city manager were very helping, I think, and I think that shows how we can do really great things in Rye in short term and with the cooperation of all for good people. And so, I think that was a wonderful, wonderful decision.
Thank you. James?
Thank you. So, I agree with a lot of what the candidates said tonight. I'll give something different. So, a review of the Ethics Committee was brought to the full -- a resolution to review the Ethics Committee was brought to city council. I voted against it. I deeply appreciate the mayor's contributions to the community and his service over time, but I felt like the volunteer group that runs the Ethics Committee are experts, deep in knowledge, and understand those things. I don't think -- I think it was bringing up issues that would hurt the community that we were devised upon before, and I thought it was not a good use of funds. And I believe that if the Ethics Committee itself needed something from the city council, we would listen to them and appropriate those funds as necessary.
Thank you. Robin?
I'd like to go back to something that James mentioned in his opening remarks about approving the restricting of the height of buildings downtown. I think that was a very important thing to vote on, and obviously, the dedication of Station Plaza. But I, like Amy and others, I'm also disappointed that we didn't vote on lease lowers and fixing that problem. And I really hope by the end of the year, we will have arrived at a new and permanent city manager, which we haven't gotten to so far. So, I think I'm hopeful about the future, and I'm very hopeful about some new members of the city council and what they will contribute in making it a more creative body.
Thank you very much. Question number two: Would you recommend a citywide reassessment appraisal of all properties in Rye to address the perception that older homes are overtaxed or undertaxed relative to new ones, and in particular, that condominiums do not carry a fair share of the tax burden relative to single-family homes? Amy, you are first.
Right now, I would not support that without knowing a little bit more about the issue. And the reason why is because I think that we are running short on small, older, affordable homes in Rye. I think that is sort of a punishing event for them to have a property tax reassessment because for a lot of these people, they're in homes that they've lived in for thirty, forty, fifty perhaps years. I've met people on the campaign trail who built their home, raised their children there, and they're now there on retirement. And I don't know that their fixed income would really support a property tax reassessment. And for that, I think at this point, not at this time.
Thank you. Maria?
Interesting question, because if I have lived in my house since nineteen ninety-three, and I get these tax letters every year from all these attorneys who are going to help me produce my tax bill. So, there is an indirect way of producing your tax bill. So, after I receive those for a couple of years as a help, I'll do it myself, and I did. So, I live in an older home. I haven't added on to it. If I ever sold it, it would be totally erased in this environment, not the environment I hope to create if I were to be elected to serve on city council. But I don't think we have enough information, and I do think there are indirect ways of reassessing properties with or without the help of those lawyers. And by the way, you don't need to use those lawyers. Send in photocopies of what you think your house is worth and should be assessed at, write the letter, and our excellent employees at City Hall will take your words for what they are, and they will read them, and you will be hopefully successful.
Thank you. James?
Thank you. I agree with a lot of what Amy said. I think a lot of the older houses with more senior people living in those, we need to keep those affordable for them, and raising their taxes would be a mistake. And maybe raising anyone else's arbitrarily would be a mistake. I think we should focus on the budget, and I think we should focus keeping costs under control, not looking for top-end items to make the budget larger.
Thank you, James. Robin?
Pretty much doing anything I recently could to keep a lot of our wonderful, longtime residents living in Rye. And we've asked many of them while we've been out campaigning, knocking on doors, how much longer, I mean, the reasons they want to stay and how it's becoming more and more unaffordable for them. But having looked into this issue several times over the last twenty years, there didn't seem to be a great appetite for doing this for the very reasons we've discussed, because is in the end going to be a fair procedure? And how many people -- I think people make a commitment when they move here. They know the taxes are high, and I think any good city council is going to do the best they can to keep them as low as possible.
Thank you. Marian?
So, I'd agree with them. We need to maintain affordability for seniors who have been here for many years. So, new assessments happen at the point of sale. So, that's one method of getting the numbers up. The taxes in Rye really are a blessed community that our taxes are seventeen percent of the total tax bill, twenty-two percent discounting the rest of school tax. Rye, our tax rate is one of the lowest at one-point-six-four percent. We're doing great. We've got great services here. We need to hold a line on that, and I think we need to hold a line on making sure that we keep our seniors here in place and allowing people to stay in Rye. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Question number three: The council approves major capital expenditures from sewer upgrades to parks. What criteria will you use to decide which projects deserve priority in the next budget cycle? Maria? Oh, wait a minute. Oh, yeah, sorry.
The council or council? The council approves?
The council approves. Council approves major capital expenditures from sewer upgrades to parks. What criteria will you use to decide which projects deserve priority in the next budget cycle?
So, if you haven't heard of Maslow's hierarchy, I heard at some point a long time ago. So, I think safety comes first. So, when the council looks at all the capital improvements that are suggested, obviously, safety comes first. So, sewer improvements seem to need to be a safety issue. So, anything to do with flooding, public safety, traffic safety, pedestrian safety will come first. Parks is more of a recreational thing, in my view. It's above the basics of living a safe life in Rye, although it's very important, and I do truly believe this, for everybody's mental health and physical health to have access to parks. So, parks should not be degraded to some secondary issue. Parks are very important. Our kids' recreational activities are very important. But I would, in my opinion, the safety of our homes, our lives, would be priority above recreational activities.
Thank you, Maria. James?
Thank you for that. So, you know, a lot of, I guess, long-term planning is going to come out with a comprehensive plan, and those are going to be decidedly CapEx projects, but our current CapEx projects, I think, are organized quite well. I would prioritize the ones that, you know, serve our neighborhoods. I think access to recreation is very important. I think it's important for, you know, not just the big fields, but the small ones in local neighborhoods. I'd also focus on projects that maybe are -- improve the quality of life, including safety and quiet enjoyment, making paths. We look at Playland Parkway, that is obviously a county road, but that path that they put on, people enjoy that and use it for running. So, then it's a question of like, where can we do that and maybe bring those things up to the forefront? I'd also say CapEx projects that we can get good grant funding for should be prioritized because those are the ones, the bigger projects, that we can do and get help at the state and federal level. So, for instance, the abolishment of the incinerator, the non-defunct incinerator is a good example of that. There's a lot of government funds available for that, if we can put it at the top of our priorities.
Thank you. Robin?
Having studied the annual capital improvement plan... Having studied the annual capital improvement plan regarding to more than my share of City Council meetings over the year, the biggest problem we have every year is finding the funding for the projects, the many essential projects that are on this plan year after year, we don't make much progress on. And while I'd love it if we got more grant money, grant money is in short supply and in shorter supply for wealthy communities like ours sadly. But I would definitely want to make sure that, as Maria said, we focus on the essentials. And the essential is always safety and health. And there are so many parts of this that are important. And we definitely need a community conversation on this, which we have not had. And we need a new city manager with us going over these. And we all need to attend the meetings that you go to at City Hall in which the library, which is represented here tonight by Chris Shoemaker, asks for money. And that should be one of the things that we give money to because the library is a vital organization, one of many in Rye.
Thank you very much. Mary?
So we need to look at comprehensive planning. And we need to look at things that, health and safety, flooding is an issue. We've had gotten money for flooding. We've got ten million dollars in projects for Locust Avenue, which is multiple projects. But Rye's already obtained five million. Fifty percent of that money has been found. So we can't get out there and start looking for money. It's not easy to do so. But as somebody who's run an after-profit for many, many years, grant funding is something that we do. It's just part of the livelihood of some of the smaller organizations being able to work with state, city, county, federal government on procuring funds. So flooding, safety, pedestrian safety, we really need to pay a lot of attention to that. And aging in place is important, I think. So we need to be looking at that.
Thank you. Amy?
The good thing about going last is you get to take all the best ideas. I think a lot of this for capital expenditures goes back to what are we trying to do? And so I wanted to just lay this groundwork. We're talking a little bit about the comprehensive plan, which can help us identify where to invest. That is for the future. If I had to just do this today, I'm going to say flooding and flooding and flooding. And one of the reasons this is on my mind is I was knocking on doors this weekend. We were over by the blind road. And people were worried that they were going to have water in their house that night. So I think that we can't put this at the forefront fast enough. The second thing that has been echoed here is safety, especially with these big developments coming through in Porchester and the addition of Rye Country Day. Pedestrian safety and traffic management is going to be paramount for us to be able to use our downtown and for our children to be able to stay safe. And then finally, I'm going to say parks because this community has spoken loud and clear in the past couple of years that parks and recreation facilities are important to them. We have Gagliotto Park right now, which is in desperate need of repair. And I think that that is just as important for those families in those neighborhoods to have a safe, local place to go to as it is living near Bintland or the high school or Milton.
Thank you very much. The fourth question. Rye's aging stormwater and sewer systems are directly under council oversight. What immediate steps should the council take to reduce backups and overflows? James, you're first.
I think that things are already in place to do that. I think part of the Save the Sound resolution was for the city to actively start working on those. And I don't purport to be a civil engineer and tell you exactly everything they're doing, but that's an active thing that the city is working on right now. So I think as a City Council, we're not, you know, we're not actually working on those projects, but we should show good governance over those projects and bring, you know, the city manager and other GPW officials to the City Council to give frequent status updates so that we know, we can add transparency to the process and know where we stand on those things.
Thank you. Robin?
I would actually say that Rye is making relatively good progress on just that. Some of the open streets you see, it's not just replacing the underground utilities. It's sewer and infrastructure. So that's the one area in which I'm not as concerned as I am about flooding and traffic safety.
Thank you. Mary?
So for flooding, we can reduce it, but not that we're allowed to look at it. We have to work in collaboration with other communities because it is not centralized in Rye. It is a regional problem. So example would be North Castle, our mom purchased Harrison, working on that building went down together. A lot of back and forth with SUNY Purchase on a project to do burms in the wood areas to slow down the water. A lot of back and forth that's been going on for years. The Locust Avenue project is moving along. But one thing that I see that needs to start being built in some of those projects is looking at the walls of the grum on the library and Rye side because they're starting to grum and they need to be included in those projects.
Thank you. Amy?
When I think about storm waters and sewers, again, I come back to some of what the city has done great at, as Robin had moved into. We have started to fix some of these pipes. I have personal experience with this because in Hurricane Ida during 2021, my neighborhood, many of my neighbors flooded for the first time ever in our neighborhood. And Ryan Coyne, the city engineer, came and did a, I guess, kind of a review of what went wrong with the neighbors, which I commend him for because he stood us on the corner of our neighborhood and he went over the sewer system, great education, public awareness over some of these issues. And it turns out, because I live in Hicks Park, that during a storm like that, the Oakland Beach Avenue storm drain gets really overwhelmed with the influx of stormwater. And when I think about what a big issue that is, all of this drain, you know, collecting water from all of these neighborhoods emptying into Disborough Park, it's a big issue. Going back to comprehensive planning, one of the things that we have to do is think about these new developments and the rules around them because we are adding more houses, splitting lots, adding more houses, an overwhelming new system. So I think it is a really important issue that we're going to have to come across, camp up against with our capital expenditure planning.
Thank you. Maria?
I think those things that you said, the one thing I can add is I experienced a lot of paving, ripping up paving, ripping up utility companies, the city of Rye. And I would suggest that from a sustainability and environmental perspective, it's pretty bad not to coordinate all the efforts between, among all the utilities in the city of Rye. So I commend the city of Rye for fixing the system. But could we please coordinate with all the utilities that then come in next week and dig up our streets again after they have been repaired? And I just, my motto will be, whether I'm elected or not, pave once, save twice.
Thank you very much. Question five. What role should the council play in supporting small businesses in Rye? Do you favor tax incentives, zoning relief, or other tools to attract and retain shops and restaurants? Robin?
Well, I did run a small business through a lot of economic turmoil, by the way, starting in 2001. And we moved on to 2008, 2014. And I was amazed that during COVID, the mayor, who is still the mayor, said to the restaurants, "I can save you, but I can't save retail in Rye." And it's COVID, he confirmed the quote. And I struggled a lot enough to print it because I couldn't believe that he said that. And I know and support local business. I shop downtown. I have an office downtown. And over the years, we've had some good efforts. We need to restart it so that we don't end up a town with only service businesses, such as nail salons and hair salons. There are many people who like to run a business, own a business downtown. And other than, if they don't own the building they're in, like Woodrow Jewelers, June &amp; Ho, the likelihood of their being able to afford the rents is, of course, it's a long-term question. And yes, I would do lots of things and have conversations.
Thank you. Mary?
Rye has a wonderful merchants association with, I'm sorry. Wonderful merchants association. That was actually started by Catherine Parker way back in the day. And it is a great place for our council and members of the community to get to know these businesses, what their challenges are, and work with them. The nature of retail has changed, which has changed the downtown drastically. People are buying from Amazon everywhere you go through town. There is a truck and somebody's dropping things off. So businesses have changed, nail salons, restaurants, et cetera, because people are not really going in to purchase their clothing and their shoes. There are a few places still up in Rye, but the nature of the has changed. Probably about ten years ago, I think we had a bunch of banks. It was what came in was banks and it kind of flowed through. I think we need to just talk to the business owners and really figure out what it is that they need to help succeed.
Thank you. Amy?
Transparency and community partnerships is something that we have really emphasized in our campaign. And I think Mary really hit the nail on the head by first starting out and talking to them and finding out what they need. We also have a really robust Chamber of Commerce. I think that there probably could be more communication with them. And then just sharing a story from the other day. A friend of mine had a daughter with a recital and she needed to go buy a pair of shoes because if everybody remembers, last year, shoes don't fit in the fall. And she was saying she wants to go downtown to choose in more and buy the shoes, but can't stand thinking about the parking. And so parking in downtown, parking is really a big issue for us. How many times have we thought about running down there, running down to get something to eat? And at this point, I am thinking about parking. What time of day should I meet my friend for coffee? What time of day am I going to find a spot to eat lunch? I've been going at 1:30 because I know parking is not going to be there right there. And this goes for retail as well. So I think going and again, diving back into this comprehensive plan and looking at some of these issues that make Rye more consumer-friendly is really important.
Thank you. Maria?
So I don't really know what detail means, but I guess it's shopping for products that you bring home in a basket. Because many of you may know, I actually bike or walk to Rye. Now, I'm fortunate enough to live within a reasonable walking and biking distance to Rye. So I understand what you're saying, you can all walk and bike, you don't have to drive. So I am much in favor of making it more walker-friendly, more biker-friendly, and as much as I'm in favor of fixing the parking laws at the bank of June &amp; Ho and that plaza. But our kids don't have to drive a car each person every day to go and get a pair of shoes. They should be able to walk or bike. I'm sorry, I grew up in Sweden. We didn't have a car per person there. So I do believe it's our amazing Chamber of Commerce, our amazing Rye Garden Club that does so many things for our downtown. And I do believe we should have a vibrant downtown. And some things should be done to encourage small businesses to be able to flourish downtown in the diversity of operations.
Thank you, Maria. James?
Thank you. So I would be more of a libertarian in this kind of answer and say that, you know, as far as they make up the stores downtown, what they deliver to our community and let the market decide. I think the City Council is more in charge of making with a broader brush stroke. So looking at areas where we supported downtown, outdoor seating, which recently came up as a big deal, we unanimously made sure that people still have outdoor seating, the community likes it, and the restaurants like it. We supported lights last year or two years ago. Those are like to make the downtown look and feel more festive. And I think that's what we're talking about in the comprehensive plans, like what's the look, the character of downtown look like? And making sure that developers make buildings that fit within the look and feel and develop it to the way that we want it developed. And I think that's, you know, public input that we can facilitate. But we let the community weigh in on it quite heavily.
Thank you very much. So that's the end of the prepared questions. I do have a few questions from the audience. So number six. This is a volunteer role. Sorry, this is a volunteer role. How has your volunteer service here in Rye shaped how you will govern Rye? And that is Mary, this first.
Okay, so I started out as an eighth person who gets based in Rye, after-school program. But I became the board chair. And from the inside out, I learned how to strategic planning, comprehensive planning. Basically, the same thing. Taking that organization from an organization that was struggling and at one point, we threatened to close. And that actually worked for us because people came out and helped us. But it was something that has prepared me to be able to run other after-profits in my life. Running my own business. So managing money, planning ahead, managing staff, fiscal responsibility. But also, it really requires collaboration and working across the table with multiple entities. And I think that's the important part of working in an after-profit or a business is that piece of it.
Thank you. Amy?
Well, I'm going to start by saying I have a sixth grader and an eighth grader. And so most people can appreciate, a lot of my volunteer time has been in school, starting when they were two years old. So I sort of grew up in that school system, volunteering and meeting many families, some of them my dear friends at this point. But really, what I learned from that experience is that we all know Rye is great, our schools are great. But what makes them exceptional is the volunteers, the PTAs, and the morgues behind them. And I definitely take that with me and will take that with me to council because I realized I don't have to be the expert. I actually have the experts on these boards and permissions. So that has really been a lesson for me. I, from there, joined the Rye Sustainability Committee and got very involved with just exactly what kind of world we were creating and leaving for our children. And we did amazing work under the leadership of Sarah Goddard at the time. And James Ward came was coming in right as I was leaving that. But just the grassroots, boots-on-the-ground efforts that volunteer work takes in this community is something that I have really taken away from that experience. And then currently, I'm at Five Steps to Five, which is a Porchester organization that heavily relied upon and funded by Rye families. And I'm chairing the Strategic Planning Committee for that right now. We're trying to expand our mission and take it out to other communities. And so lots of great experiences.
Thank you very much. Maria?
So I don't have a lot of formal fancy titles insofar as Rye volunteer experience. But I will tell you, for the last thirty-two years living here, I bike and walk to the station almost every day. The number of people I met that I know, you all know Ken and Keith, right? you all know Ken and Keith, right? If you don't, you don't live in Rye. The people I know, the people I care for, the people I talk to every day on my way to and from the station now. I am retired since the end of last year. Have become my community. In addition, I raised two sons together, my husband and I. There's not a sports team. We haven't been manager or coach or whatever on. I don't want to dwell upon it because I'm not bragging about it because it was a pleasure and a privilege. I am totally committed to Rye. Was that a stop?
No, no.
I saw the stop. Thirty. I am totally committed to Rye. And if you think I don't have done enough volunteer experience without having the fancy titles, you are wrong. I have been introduced as the biking mom to the train station, as the one who commuted with her 10-day-old son, as the one mom in Rye who was commuting back and forth to New York every day for 30 years.
Thank you very much. James?
Thank you. So as I mentioned in my opening statement, I've been involved in the Rye Sustainability Committee and the Rye Sustainability Foundation. They're a very important part of who I am, what I, how I want to influence the city. Under my leadership, we moved to a climate smart community. That's something that not only has pushed us in a more sustainable direction, but also led to funding. And I think when we go to comprehensive planning, we want to think about sustainable elements. Sustainable elements are things that make the city not only good for us, but good for the next generation and generations to come. The second thing that has really influenced me is our Rye hockey coach. So I coach 11 to 12-year-olds. And if you want to know about project management, try getting 15 11- and 12-year-olds in a locker room to settle down, to think about the game, to stop hitting each other, get out on the ice and have fun, but also win. I think that's talking a lot about, you know, having an impact, but also like, you know, motivating people to do things and also making, you know, helping the development of kids which are by a part of our community.
Thank you very much. Robin?
I think that I have a long history with nonprofits, long before we worked as well. And I think you're really talking to listen. Make sure I knew what the, who the users were of various organizations. I worked on budgets of library. I researched what area libraries were doing to make sure that we were doing the best possible job we could and what hours we should be open. I think I have a history with Five Steps to Five as well as the Art Center and the library of helping them expand their mission and make sure that when people suggested I had an idea for doing something else added to the load, that we found a way to do that. And I think that some of the proudest moments were probably finding, working with homeless families, after-school education for homeless families in San Diego. And getting also in San Diego, a different from the private school our sons attended. Interviewing 100 Vietnamese students, all of whose parents had come over on boats. Helping five of them get scholarships in one school. And that program still goes on.
Thank you very much. Question number seven. As a council member, you'll vote on zoning changes that affect Rye's character. Do you believe the city should allow more accessory dwelling units, ADUs, or multifamily housing? And under what conditions? Amy, you're first.
This is a great question. And it's a great question because it's a complicated question. Because I think some people might listen to this question and think, "Well, I don't want my neighbor building an ADU so they can Airbnb it." But the reality of it is, they probably want to build an accessory dwelling unit to house a parent or to house a child. And so I think I'm going to heart back again to the comprehensive plan. We will have these exact questions answered. And we're going to have these questions answered because we need to go out and find out from the community what the community wants and needs. Many of us have children. I know I'm correct. But many of us have children who are living with us, who are commuting into the city because housing is unaffordable. It's unaffordable in a lot of Westchester County. It's unaffordable in New York City. And it's an interesting question with the accessory dwelling units, but it's a really great question because it's not one I anticipated coming up. So I think this goes back to the comprehensive plan. Let's find out from the community. Let's involve the community. And let's see what is needed.
Thank you. Maria?
I totally agree with Amy on let's run down to the comprehensive plan process. Now, remember, the comprehensive plan is a process that will recite and resubstain the document that will be a guidance for future city councils. It's not law. Nothing is going to happen once you have a comprehensive plan. But then, city council will base future legislation on the comprehensive plan. So don't kill your sense. Don't think this is the solution to all our issues. In the meantime, we need to figure out how do we solve the immediate situation? How do we work to make Rye what we want over the next two years when we can without a comprehensive plan? So we can do a lot of things without the comprehensive plan. But in that comprehensive plan, we will be able to determine if the city wants, city people want us to allow accessory buildings, garages with additional apartments on top. And I think the city residents of Rye should be able to decide that in the plan, which will not be law. It will be just a policy document. Remember that. Nobody else can tell you anything else.
Thank you. James?
So it's a difficult question. I was glad to not have to do this one first. You know, we mentioned comprehensive plan, but I think we want to mention sorry outcomes and what we think. I mean, I've lived in a neighborhood for now 12 years and seen very small houses raised and then have very large houses put up in a maximum footprint. And although my house value increases because of the, I'm worried that access points in Rye are limited when we start to build, when we build things for only one segment of society. So I don't know what the exact answer is, but I know that we want, for instance, teachers and other community members somewhat close. We want places where people can age into and not have to worry about the size. Like if you're trying to scale down in Rye and you can't find a house with a small enough footprint that you can afford, you're going to have to move out. And then we're going to have a very stratified community of people coming in from jobs that are good enough that they can afford in a really expensive place and then leaving when they're done raising their children. And I think that puts the community at a loss.
Thank you.
I've lived through and followed a lot of different city councils. And this question is not a new one. And I have no issue with the creation of a new plan after 40 years of since the last one. But I don't think in certain areas we really can afford to wait a lot longer on development, which is what we're talking about. I know the question is about multifamily housing. There is so little entry-level housing in Rye that it concerns everyone. And yes, if you make a salary of a million dollars a year, this is, you know, no problem. But that's not, I miss the diversity I found when we first moved to Rye. There were definitely people of modest income and very happy in modest-sized homes. So the need for multifamily housing is real. Where we're going to put it is a big question. We had a hard time figuring out where we're going to put affordable housing. And we've made small steps in this area. But I know that a lot of people are I look at the development on Bradhall Street and the one on the corner of Oakland Beach Avenue and Hicks. And I think, how did we really improve these projects? They are not good for Rye, notwithstanding their high tax base.
Thank you. Here it is.
I'm bringing the baby. I have a little brother here. Would you need multifamily housing?
Like you, I've been here for a very long time. And we've seen the diversity of the community has dwindled because of the rising cost of housing here. The average cost of a house is $1.875 million in Rye. That is the average. That precludes a lot of people from purchasing here. So as I'm out walking around, I talked to a young man who moved back, went to Rye High School. I believe he graduated in 2012. Mary had moved in Texas and decided, "I want to run from Texas quick, I'm going home." He got home and he came buy a house here. So he's living with his parents in Rye Brook. They're about to have a child. He's out of, you know, in front of the snackery and just lamenting that he would like to live in Rye. Maybe a good multi-house, a multi-unit would suffice for someone like them to be able to give them a trek.
Thank you very much. Question number eight. What qualities will you look for when selecting a new city manager? Maria, you're first.
So I didn't know we were allowed to talk on this topic because I understand it's been so confidential and that the current city council members have been
It was from the audience.
What qualities? I would look for somebody who has shh, I'm going to say something. No, okay. Who has experience in running a similar situation job. Probably a city manager from some other community in the Northeast fairly, you know, close by. And I think I would look for somebody who is truly dedicated to people who are open to every person, whether color, race, anybody who comes into Rye in order to make sure we don't have any future conflict about who we're serving, who we are. And I would think that a city manager would be able to afford to live in Rye. I've heard that they're not, can't, we can't request that somebody lives in Rye because it's too expensive. But I would hope we could find a starter home. Maybe the community can help out. So we can have a city manager living in Rye, living, feeling, being with us.
Thank you. James?
Thank you. So for a city manager, you obviously have a few requirements. I think people would voice them pretty much. Like experience at the seat, ability to run a large organization, familiarity with New York laws and the bodies that are decision-making, like knowing people of a nominee and so forth. I think there's another quality that we need, and that's a team builder. Able to build the staff, make sure that the staff are getting the opportunities and we're keeping retention amongst those staff. Why is that important? Is because if you look at some of the ways that we're like currently saving money, for instance, it's because we have staff like they can do big projects. Look what the DPW did to the local parking lot, for instance, that was paved, reformatted and paved by the city, saving us a lot of CapEx budget. You want a city manager that can bring people together, that takes care of their people and can keep those people on that ride. And I think that's it.
Thank you. Robin?
Well, I never disagree with Maria. But I will say that one requirement of the job, based on our last city manager, who was so first-rate and put up with an awful lot from certain members of the council, is he, unlike so many of his predecessors, had no experience in this area. He was smart, he was a born leader. And Rye continues to have a very slim staff. We don't have multi-layers in City Hall. They operate, they do everything and they're good at doing everything and they get along. And yes, that person needs to be able to get along. And the city council needs to respect that person and work well with them. And I think the sooner we get someone, and I heard from Frank Holros, who was in the position on and off for about 30 years. He kept calling him back when a city manager left or was fired. He said he's not doing it again. We need someone like Greg Astrey. We need another Greg Astrey. He's set very high bar. And I would hope that we could find someone that the bar.
Thank you. Marian?
All right, so we need someone who's creative, smart, a leader, somebody who's collaborative, who's going to work well with others. I think the person at the top sets the tone for the culture of an organization. So we need someone who is going to be a great leader with the staff, who understands funding, who has worked with various government, governmental organizations, has been somebody who can go out in the community and be able to people and understand people.
Thank you. Amy?
I think everybody has said really great things about what we're looking for in a city manager. And I think Greg Astrey does, did leave big shoes to fill. So just echoing what everybody else has said, I don't have too much new to add except for I would like this person to be able to think creatively about the relationships and the partnerships that we're going to need to develop to solve some of our problems in Rye. For example, flooding. When we look at all of the issues that originate upstream, we know that flooding isn't just a Rye problem. It's not going to only be solved in Rye. It's going to take somebody who has the ability to think across municipalities, to partner with the state, to partner with the county and partner with the feds if we have anything left. And really be thinking about how those relationships and partners are going to be important to meeting some of the challenges that we face in Rye.
Thank you, Amy. Question number nine. In your opinion, does the current tree ordinance properly balance the need to protect the city's old-grown trees from overdevelopment with the freedom of homeowners to address their own private tree issues? James, you start.
So we can say yes and no. So I think it was a good attempt. And I think there is some good language in there. But I worry about some of Rye's oldest trees. I, right now, I'm running a project to plant oak trees in Rye. So oak trees over to 100 years old, 200 years old are currently existing in Rye. And we should put extra protections on those. I think I like the way that it was written. And I think, you know, you want to look at things like base height circumference, that's the height of 4 and 1/2 feet. You want to look at the type of trees. But I think like some trees, for instance, invasive trees that aren't really good. Like if someone was saying, "I want to cut down Norway, Norwegian maple," I'd say, "Let me help you." If someone was saying, "I want to cut down a beautiful oak tree that adds not only to the community, not only serves us in helping us mitigate flooding and so forth, I'd say, "No, I'm going to tie this up to your tree and not let you do that." And so I don't think those protective aspects are there. I think it clearly looks at base height radius and doesn't look at our invasions versus, you know, important trees.
Thank you. Robin?
I'm very much for Rye having a tree law. I frankly wish we passed the one that Carolyn Cunningham spearheaded about 20 years ago because it was just about perfect. And I do agree certainly with James about oaks because they are the trees that absorb the most water,
the most water, which is a big subject tonight. And I also am very concerned that this, that tree law just rushed through, we don't need to go back and talk about what happened. But are we really sure, and are we asking people who take out a great number of trees to replant what they took out? Are we asking to put oaks and other natives in there when they did a huge building project and tore out a lot of trees? And are we, how many penalties have we asked to be paid? So, I think it's a work in progress, but I think we have so many things to address. It may not be at the very top of our list sadly, but I would definitely like to see it beat the floor and still respect our rights.
Thank you. Mary?
Thank you very much. James, we need to protect our trees. Our oak trees, as they say, very important to us, native planting is important to us. Should people have the right? And I think that was one of the, part of the question, is do they have the right to take trees down? I think, I think we need to limit that. This is a very small community, we should all be working together, we should be educated. I'm thinking in my head, when we was talking years ago, there was a mayor in Bronxville, Mary McMartin, and she had this hug-a-tree campaign, that I could just see her out there hugging the trees, because they are so precious to us, like, we even do need to take care of them. It takes a long time for another tree to replace.
Thank you. Amy?
I think there was an article in the Rye Record about this recently, and I will give them credit, because they're asking the right question. The tree law that was passed, I think, is a step in the right direction. I don't think it solved the whole problem. And part of this is, because I don't think there's any way currently that we measure our canopy. And so, until we really even know what we have, I think we need to, we need to try to be preserving our tree canopy, of course, but we also need to know what we have, and whether that's, you know, aerial footage via drones, but some kind of counting system to exactly know where we are starting. And James brings up a good issue as well, just for people who maybe aren't as familiar with invasive versus non-invasive. When you have invasive trees, the root systems are very shallow, they stay at the top, and they tend to grow shallow and wide. And these are the type of trees that you'll see buckling on your sidewalks, that will grow into roads and cause damage. So, a tree isn't just a tree, the right kind of trees are important. But I think this is a tricky subject, because we have to balance property rights. Nobody wants to move in, have their dream garden, but can't cut down that tree in the backyard, because the city says no. So, it's something that we need to continue to review with the law, we need to see if we're trying to make the progress that we're intending to make, and continue to work on it. I think it's something that needs to be continued to look at and protect it.
Thank you, Amy. Maria?
I'm a big tree hiker, so one of those you mentioned. I live in a property where we've lost many trees over the last 30 years, two storms for the last, we lived, the years we lived in that house. And I do believe that we need to have a law protecting trees of a certain species, size, and location. I do believe that the current tree law was a rushed work, it is very un-user-friendly. I have read it about 20 times, I can figure out, if I can, what I need to do to take down the dying, tiny little leland spruce in my backyard. It is also, it's a heavy burden on the city staff to try to administer this tree law. On the other hand, I do believe that we do need to protect our trees just as, and property rights come in, you can't even change the window on your house to a smaller house without improvement. What is that about property rights? It's the same thing. So, I believe species, location, size, but it has to be user-friendly. If you've got a dying little thing, you should be able to take it up, you should be more preservative, and it should be worth something. By the way, for a developer, a thousand dollars for a plant, it's nothing. They're happily paying you a couple of hundred thousand dollars to clear that one.
Thank you. Question number 10. The Recreation Commission has advocated for projects like artificial turf at Nursery Field. How would you balance youth sports needs with environmental and neighborhood concerns when these projects come before the council? Robin?
That's a good one. I have to say, and I was not, having spent a lot of years in California, and learning that California, for one, was banning the creation of additional artificial turf fields statewide, that caught my attention. So, when Rye was setting about to improve Nursery Field, which certainly needed improvement, I asked a lot of questions, and that process seemed to have already been decided, because the mayor was already in favor of it, and had told the people who were willing to fund this plan to redo it, that it was going to happen. I didn't like the process being rushed, but I have an 11-year-old grandson, an eight-year-old granddaughter who live here, and I go to every field, and Bagliardo, they've actually made some improvements there. I'd like to see them relook at Disborough Park and make sure that no matter what happens, that recycling center is not where it is, so that we can have safer fields in Rye. And if it's, and as artificial turf concern, concerns about toxicity are diminishing, I'm sure that we will be building more artificial turf fields. The question is, are we going to improve the fields to the level that they are in other communities? And many parents who attend these can tell you that those fields will be better.
Thank you. And Mary?
I think we're going to have to look at this one by one, for each specific location, and assess whether turf is feasible. We looked at Rye High School, many times, we replaced that, multiple times. So, we're here. Okay. So, we have to look one by one at each of these fields. I recently was talking to a little girl in CDS, and she's a soccer player. It's like, oh, you played at Nursery Field. How do I get? Well, I played there once, and I fell, and I cut my leg, and I don't want to play there anymore. Out of the mouth of a baby. So, we also have to talk to the kids. How, how is it working for them? I don't know. So, let's talk to the kids, let's see environmentally, you know, how, how it washes out.
There's no denying that athletics are a central part of family life in Rye. I have been on these fields for over 10 years now, starting with my kids for two, and it's only, my time on these fields has only increased as they've gotten older. But I can't think that you could, I don't think you can definitively say that turf is always better, or grass is always better, because it really depends on the need of the field. And, you know, some people think that turf is more accessible, more reliable, other people think that it's out of the character of Rye, and it's got too many environmental concerns. I think it's got to be determined by a case, on a case-by-case basis, for what the need of the community is, and for what the intended purpose of the field is.
Thank you. Maria?
So, I'm Swedish, and as you know, Sweden is at the forefront of sustainability and environmental responsible practices. Sweden is a high user of artificial turf. So, and I'm also very much involved with Swedish, my Swedish university, which is a very large and very, very research-focused university. So, I believe in the future of artificial turf. There are alternatives in Sweden now, but we have biodegradable artificial turf. And so, I believe in the future of technology, the future of technology will come up with artificial turf that's biodegradable. But in the meantime, let's stop using plastics.
Yes.
I brought my own.
Just saying, James, if you put the 30 seconds sign-off, am I starting now?
James?
I, I, I...
Sorry. Okay.
You can do your own.
Yeah. So, the original question was, you balancing youth sports needs and environmental concerns, and I just, I don't think those things are in opposition. I don't, when we think of youth, we think of what's best for children, what's best for the environment. So, I hope you think of those things together. You know, when it comes to nursery field, which is the original phrase that the question was in, I go by there today, I live very close to it, and I look at it, pretty nice job, I see people playing organized sports on it, I see the DPW did a beautiful job with the, with the replantings, and it looks very good, I must say. I still have concerns overall whether there is an environmental impact, environmental impacts of flooding, environmental impacts for the long-term use of plastics. I talked to a professional lacrosse player, and he said, hey, you, what do you think of turf fields? It's like, not bad, you know, it was dangerous to, you know, playing on them, so you've got to worry about ligaments and so forth, but one of the things is during the sample of the field, it gets very hot, much hotter than regular fields. I think, I think the thing about Nursery Field is, I feel like we didn't have dialogue on what are the alternatives would come into it. It really came into city council, and I was sitting in the audience like everybody else, so I, I didn't see everything on it, but I thought, wow, we're really not thinking about any of the alternatives, till it was really late in the process. And that's when someone from Martha's Avenue had grass fields, and they talked about managing them, so I would like to more communicate, engage, and know what's the best solutions.
Thank you, James. We have one extra question, question number 11, and I don't quite understand it, so let me know if you do. If elected, would you vote to continue Rye's participation, to have citizens opted in to, as a default, Sustainable Westchester, and why?
Do you want some help on that question?
I think, I think if, have citizens opted into Sustainable Westchester as a default, and why? Would you vote to continue Rye's participation, to have citizens opted into Sustainable Westchester as a default, and why? And Mary, you're first.
Okay, so, I would, and Sustainable Westchester, the only way that a community can be part of that effort is to have to use the opt-in. The opt-in is something that will only pertain to new people moving into the community that need to opt-in. Anyone who wants to opt-out can opt-out, and it is up to us to provide the education to the community. I think there's a misconception that the major part of our Con Ed bill is the actual bill, and not the, the delivery is the part that costs so much money. So, yes, the sustainable part is a little bit more than the Con Ed is in part, but if you are a concerned citizen, and you are looking for sustainability efforts, and I prefer to support a green America.
Thank you. Amy?
Yes, I would vote to continue that option where you are able to opt-in as the default. And the reason why is, for those of us who still believe climate change is a thing, it gives us a place to put our money aligned with where our values are, and I think that it's an important choice as a consumer. But more importantly, I just want to say that, you know, really, our issue here is Con Ed's ability to raise prices. And if I get on council, I'm going to do what Josh Nathan did, and other people in our city and on our boards did, and that is to put pressure on Con Ed to, to stop the rate hikes. Shelley Mayer has done a wonderful job of challenging Con Ed and trying to keep those rate hikes lower, lower for their consumers. But really, we need to be looking at Con Ed, and why delivery charges and service charges are the same. I opted into Sustainable Westchester, the way it's purchased is it's by, it's bought as a future almost, in bulk. Sometimes it's more expensive, sometimes it's not, but it gives me a choice, and it really helps me to not be forced into the monopoly of Con Ed.
Thank you. Maria?
So, being a corp, having retired as a corporate lawyer and seeing all these fancy financial products over 35 years of my life, my belief is that we're not getting green energy through Westchester Power. Somebody's buying some certificate, and some investment bank or somewhere is making a ton of money based on this, and I don't like it. And I don't like, coming from Sweden, that I'm forced in and have to make a choice to opt out of a free choice. Now, believe me, I haven't opted out. I am still buying that power, but I don't believe the choice should be made for me. I'm a free citizen, I should be able to make my choice, and the choice should be clearly stated by the city of Rye if, if they have opted in for me. I think it is totally not appropriate for somebody to make that choice for me, when I otherwise have a right to that choice. And I would like to see who's making money out of this, and don't think we're getting green energy coming into our homes, nowhere.
Thank you. James?
Thank you. I voted yes to Westchester Power. Those contracts are a choice for Rye, and it's the only choice that the city council could make that gave the community a choice. If we chose instead the default to Con Ed, then you would be left, as every individual, to go and find out some alternative way, and that's very confusing for a lot of people. Sustainable Westchester, who organizes Westchester Power, found the cheapest contracts for us to get into. Yes, they're fixed. Yes, rates sometimes are higher, sometimes they're lower, but if going into those, if you don't like it, you can opt out. Opting out takes two minutes, you can go online and do it. The other thing is, as Amy alluded to, why would I want to give Con Ed a monopoly, my whole business? There was a lot of confusion about rate hikes, but a lot of what drove Con Ed bills was not the rate, but the delivery charges, and they continue to raise the delivery charges because they're monopoly. It had nothing to, it had very little to do with the rates that we put on with Westchester Power.
Thank you very much. That is the last question. We will now, thank you very much, candidates, we will now have closing statements. As I said earlier, closing statements will be...
You didn't give Robin a chance.
Oh. Oh, I forgot Robin! No problem! Josh is in front.
I apologize, Robin.
I have to say that I agree with some part of everything that was said, and I just want to make sure, because I don't really know anyone who is against sustainable everything. I think, I do know, pretty much everyone I know is not happy about the fact that the county portion of our tax bill is 23%, and sometimes we wonder how valuable the county is to us. But I think that as long as we, I don't like the fact that the choice was made for us, I don't like Con Ed, which raised hikes, I mean, raised the price so much during COVID it was unconscionable. But I think as long as we have an opt-in and opt-out, I think we'll be discussing this down the road, and I think for the time being, that's what we have. So, we're fighting Con Ed, and we need to put more pressure on them, for sure, but I have nothing against Sustainable Westchester.
Thank you very much, Robin. And thank you all, candidates. We will now have closing statements. As I said earlier, closing statements will be given in the reverse order as the opening statements. Each candidate will have up to two minutes to make their closing statement. James, you're first.
Thank you. Again, I want to thank the legal winner voters for the opportunity to speak directly to the voters tonight. It's been a great honor to serve on the city council over the past year, and I'm proud of the results we delivered for Rye. I'm running for reelection, because in so many areas, it's time to get the job done. We need to deliver a comprehensive master plan with sustainability elements, not in a decade from now, but within 18 months. We need to move forward on key flooding mitigation projects to protect our residents from the next... next hurricane item. We need to protect our neighbors from overdevelopment and find solutions for parking and cell services. We need to build a climate-smart city that is more energy-efficient, physically prudent, and storm resilient. On November 4th, I hope I can count on your vote for our Democratic ticket. Vote for A to protect the best of Rye and plan for what's next. Thank you very much.
Thank you, James. Maria?
Thank you very much for listening to me today. And as I said, somebody texted us before this event, Robin and me, and I said, quoting from a movie, and you guess which one it is, we're just two women standing here in front of you, asking the Rye builders to like us. Not the new. So to conclude, what are my top priorities if I were to elect, be elected to City Council? We must move forward to show actual, actual results in solving the flooding problems. And that relates to blind broke, it relates to beaver swam, swamp creep, it relates to sewers, bridges, everything. I'm very concerned about preserving Rye's character, so we need a new comprehensive plan so we can continue to develop the Rye. We all have come to love and not compromise our friendly neighborhoods and wonderful downtown. The plan will address all the issues we've talked about tonight, safety, development, environmental sustainability, but it will be just policies. In the plan, we will have guidance for what then the City Council will have to decide in, 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 in new laws. In the meantime, we need to continue our work before the plan is in place. We need to continue repaving, we need to repave our downtown parking areas. We need to make sure our bikes, bike situation and traffic situation and walking situation in and from Rye and the school and Darius Market and wherever people are walking is safe and sound. I want us, as I said before, to put, oh, you didn't give me that sentence.
Finish your sentence.
Finish your sentence. Make it a long one. But most important is the city manager search. We are now without a permanent city manager and the city's 160 employees deserve better. Let's get him or her hired. Let's not perfection be the enemy of good, of the good. Thank you for listening and thank you for coming.
Thank you, Maria. Amy?
Thank you again to the League of Women Voters and to all of you who have given us generously your attention tonight. We've talked about flooding, development, and how Rye can grow responsibly. But what this election is about is trust. Trust that our city will protect our neighbors from flooding, trust that development will reflect our character and not overwhelm it, and trust that your representatives will listen, work together, and deliver results without partisan drama. My career, whether serving at the Pentagon, working in healthcare, or volunteering here in Rye, has always been about solving complex problems through collaboration. I believe that's the exact kind of leadership that this city needs right now. I'm not interested in scoring political points. I'm interested in fixing problems and doing it with respect, transparency, and a sense of partnership. I'm proud to be running with Josh Nathan, James Ward, Marian Anderson, a team that understands Rye's challenges and shares a commitment to working together for real solutions. In the years ahead, we can make Rye flood resilient. We can update our comprehensive plans so that development fits our values, and we can protect our streets, trees, strengthen our downtown, and ensure safe streets and fields for our kids. But that only happens if we work together across neighborhoods, across parties, and across generations, to preserve what makes this place so special. I love this community. It's where my husband and I are raising our kids. We've built friendships and it's where I want my every family to feel secure and heard. So on November 4th, I hope that you'll vote for steady, thoughtful leadership. Vote for the team that will preserve the best and plan for what's next. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Marian?
Well, for Marian, Marian has been here for her entire life, maybe in and out a little bit. I have a very long, long, long history of volunteering in the community. I'm a good space, I've been on the Rye Women Rights Commission. I've worked throughout the county. I've been the chair of the Westchester County Women's Advisory Board. I've worked with PTA. I've worked in the EPK Committee. I've worked on the West Cup Board. I was a vice chair at Carver Center. I am a giver that works very hard in the community because I care about people. In my work, I've worked at not-for-profit organizations. One of, I worked for Andrews Children's Center, which is a very large not-for-profit. Rye City has a budget of, what, $22 million? Andrews has a $35 million budget, very large not-for-profit. I was a division director and the executive leadership team to their community service division, which meant that I was working throughout Yonkers, Mount Garnet, all of Westchester County with police, with governments, dealing with grants, working with people one-on-one. I am an early childhood innovator. I love kids. It's my life working with children. And I really enjoy working with seniors and working for the Alzheimer's Association, which is a Westchester association, but it's here. It's here. So across the board, I've spent my life working for people and I would very much like to work for the people of Rye. Thank you. Along with Amy. James?
Thank you, Marian. Robin?
The office all of us here tonight are running for requires setting and accomplishing local goals, which can be lofty. Sustainability is not limited to simply planning more natives. It's about pursuing what's practical and long-term and attainable. The issues that I champion are all about safety and duration. Flooding, absolutely number one. We have a Rye Flood Advisory Committee. We need to meet with them, we need to meet with the community and, and go over what we can do about flood mitigation on a local level while we wait for help from the county, the state, the Fed, to help contain the flow of water upstream before the next major flood. And like everyone else, we were all worried last week. We need to install a proper crosswalk at Theodore Frank Purchase and Purdy where hundreds of children and commuters walk and bike every day. It's chaotic. No pedestrian knows when they can cross safely. We also need to fix the sidewalks, which are falling apart, and repave the parking lots. I think we need to ask the Public Safety Commissioner to focus on traffic violations, illegal U-turns, speeding, passing other people. I've had an office in downtown Rye for over 20 years and I know how much we need a downtown police officer. I would also, as somebody who spends a lot of time going to the recycling center, but more importantly, going to games at Disborough Park, we have to, that recycling center, which is open 24/7, is home to rats. And just last Friday, a rabid raccoon, best yet, moved through the thing and secured the gates. Kids play baseball and softball there and having a dunk right by them defies common sense. Having covered Rye City Council meetings, not on Zoom, but with Pat and Ken, I know how local government works as well.
Thank you very much, Robin, and thank you to all of the candidates. Thank you to the city of Rye for hosting this Candidates Forum, to the candidates for their willingness to serve in a volunteer capacity, and to all of you for your community's support. Thank you also to our League of Women Voters team who put together tonight's forum. Please consider supporting the work we do by joining the League or making a donation to our education foundation. Election Day is Tuesday, November 4th, from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Early voting starts on October 25th and ends on November 2nd. For information on registering to vote or your voting location, please call the district clerk or look to the district website under voting. The Comprehensive Voter Guide can be found at vote411.org. That concludes our Candidates Forum for the evening. Good night and have a safe trip.